Quickly stand. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under your God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks all for all coming this evening, appreciate that very much. As for the normal startup, we'll start with a public comment if anybody has anything they'd like to discuss. Michael.
Mike, I just want to talk about two things that we talked about in previous meetings. I know you're looking at the village parking lot study as far as signs and stuff, I know you're going to use the businesses.
Actually, there's resolutions this evening for a couple of things for the downtown. Specifically, remember Brian Moore and our assembly went through a number of different items, concerns or whatever from our meeting that we did have with our downtown businesses. We had a small group, actually it was fairly well attended and actually we need to probably schedule another meeting. But in any event, there'll be resolutions tonight for the for the parking, for the road study during high traffic volumes areas and for parking signs as well. And we'll be looking for assistance from the state because it's, you know, we live in two-state roads, so they'll have to be involved in the process.
And as part of that, the do not block the box, is that part of that study?
Yes.
That is okay. The only other thing that I would say is the garbage receptacles, we definitely need more in this village. You walk down Adrian Boulevard, you walk down Brother Plaza Drive, I mean, I walk there quite often, at least a couple times a week, three, four times a week. If there's a receptacle there, I'll pick the garbage out, throw it in the receptacle, but I'm not going to like carry it from a long ways. We definitely need more receptacles in this village.
Okay, I think we have how many left over, Chris, two? So we could put one on Brotherhood and the second along the corner. And maybe across the street or at the park intersection by Memorial. Anyone else? Any discussion?
Sean, hey, you work over at, I have two things. One is about the pickleball courts, you're giving a quote here, are you doing the whole old rink as a pickleball court?
Not this time. No, half, half the court.
At this time, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Are you going to expand the support?
So what we're trying to do is with the money that we have to put in three courts. So it's basically half of what's would be there now, all right? The other half we're going to leave alone, so it can still be used for kids and playing pickleball. And if it picks up, then potentially we could add another three courts when we have the funding to do it.
On that respect, what's going on with the pickleball courts, the town, you stated the town was putting in, you had two years ago?
Right, and I actually went by there the other day, it's been leveled and they have gravel in there. So progress has been made, I don't know what their timeline is to, you know, have it completed. But yes, it's.
So that would move it forward, put some pickleball players over there also?
Correct.
Public courts in there.
Yes.
The other one is, you were talking about doing the paving, the skateboard part because there's cracks in it. Well, those cracks are natural cracks because there were scenes where the labor did it. That could be fixed the same way as they did at the hockey rink, you know, grind it up and patch it before you get into a big expense of moving the equipment, which Chris at one point stated, if you move the equipment, it's going to be broken. So if you pull that out of there, it's going to cost you more money. In the meantime, somebody has somebody to play on it if you just want to fix these cracks.
Yeah, well, obviously the surface needs to be flat and if they were to do what they did at the roller hockey, it would be probably a dangerous situation because there's, there's a lift from the, from the areas that were ground with the cracks where and then they round it up.
Yeah.
You know, there, it's just, it's not perfectly flat. You have two joints and there's a, an elevation difference. So if you're skateboarding or rollerblading, whatever, you're going to hit that thing on an angle, I'm assuming, you know, it'll be a situation where, you know, potentially we'll have a fall. So you want it clean, you want it flat, and that was the only reason to entertain that at this point in time. We also, with the equipment that's on there, if it's, it's metal, so I'm not sure.
But Chris stated if they moved it to the hockey, uh, ice rinks there, more than likely it'd be broken apart.
Yeah, I, we need to look at it. And I think you inspected the, the half, half, you know, the roller blade equipment or the.
It's all bolted down. That one's not bolted.
It looks like it's unputted.
It's on pads, it was there when we built it. That one was not bolted, it was just on pads, sort of pads. The other one was, it's gone.
Yeah, I mean, there were other pieces there that have, that were damaged and probably some vandalism, but at the end of the day, they're removed and so the other side of this, we mentioned at the other meeting, was there is a gentleman, his name is Steve, and he was working on a proposal to come forth with a new updated version of everything that's down there to make it more interesting and probably newer equipment to make it better for people that skateboard.
Right, he was looking for cement. So if you do pave and then he wants to do it, you're going to be ripping up the new pavement?
No, we're not going to rip it up to replace it, that would be foolish to spend that kind of money.
You'd be just as well to leave it until you get a full view on it and whether it's going to be cement and new equipment or.
His layout is exactly for the dimension that's there today.
Right.
Okay, so our plan would be to asphalt it versus making it concrete because I would assume if you're going to make it concrete, it would almost have to be, I would assume it would look like a polished concrete.
They polish it, yeah. Have you ever been to one?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever been to a skateboard concrete one?
No.
Yeah, they're smooth, they polish them.
Yeah, so they polish them, which is another step in minutes. So at the end of the day, we've had the asphalt for, since we did it when the Woodfield Park was created, so I don't think that doing it again, putting a tap on that thing is going to really hurt anything. So, you know, his recommendation would be concrete, but I don't know, again, if we didn't do it and we're waiting for his proposal and we can then go for grant money to potentially purchase the, the equipment, you know, I don't know, we'll have to play it by ear.
Yeah, my theory is you should just leave it until you have a final decision on it instead of pulling the equipment off, possibly damaging it, and there's nothing there.
Our only point in trying to do both at the same time is that the paving company could come out and pay both at the same time and not pay twice for basically coming out, pulling equipment, et cetera. That was our only promise. Yeah, thank you. And also, we did take a look at that issue on the pond behind the mall, so we did check that out and we're going to, we have a solution to kind of fix that area so that the water goes through the channel versus around and everything else.
Are you supposed to build up and?
Yeah.
Well, slowly.
Yeah, just, I don't know how high, and it looks like over time it's been some soil removal and stuff like that just from running water. So we need to just double check the height and even the water that was there the day we were there that was running around the channel was a small amount of water at the end of the day. So if we, if we come in with concrete, we build that back up, you know, potentially it's going to raise the water level, I'd say what, maybe six inches?
Should be about two foot, I think.
You know.
Because that's why you give somebody reeds over there because reeds grow in lower water.
Yeah.
And the whole pond will be clogged, right?
So we have that on our, our map too, on our list.
One last thing, we have the walk sign on Brother Plaza 94.
Ninety-four, yep.
There's two on one lamp where the walkway is painted. So you go east and west on it and you go north and south. On the other side, there is no painted lines on across 94, but somebody has switched the walk and do not walk sign to the ninety, face 94 where it should be facing east and west, not north and south. Either that or they took one out, but I don't think they did take it out, I think they spun it.
DOT I saw in town last week was doing a bunch of sign stuff, so I don't know if they moved something.
That was, it's been for a couple of months, I figured somebody might do something about it, but nothing's been done.
Okay, I'm just saying, I did see them working on the intersection, so, but they're the DOT, we don't have a lot of control over them.
I don't think it was DOT that did it.
Um, okay, somebody got creative.
So we'll contact DOT and we'll have them come out and take a look.
It should be facing east and west.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Andrew. Man, I'm on Woodfield Drive. My house is right next to the bridge that collapsed previously, they rebuilt the bridge. They obviously didn't take the flooding concern into account, they just built the bridge. The mayor was there that day in July when my backyard had got flooded. So when we spoke, he said we might need a study to look to see how we can alleviate the problem, but yesterday I cut those highwayes that are next to the water because, you know, I had erosion from the previous storm. They're logs down in the creek, trunks. I saw two of them from my house, it's not on my property, but it's further down, but I can see it. So maybe they have to clear that first, that might alleviate some of the stoppers, the water's going to stop if it has trunks going across. I saw two, might be more further down.
Trees that have fallen down?
Yes. Yes, I can't see because, you know, it curves, so maybe they could look at that first, that might help alleviate.
Yeah, we'll need to look at that because I believe that section in there for the drainage is all Army Corps of Engineers, so they would have to potentially be notified or we'd have to get hold of DPC and then see what kind of remedy could be done, but we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you, man.
Anybody else? Okay, just our normal discussion, peace here. The nine eleven ceremonies will be commencing obviously on Monday, nine eleven. There's, there'll be two as normal, one at eleven o'clock and then the one in the evening is around dusk, but they recommend to get there around, you know, sort of getting down there around seven o'clock or something. So it is raining or shine at the moment and if you can make it, you know, please, please come down and, and support the memorial and all the firemen that gave their lives. On another note, we have, the school starts tomorrow, so obviously traffic, cars, kids, everything else, plus we just need to, you know, our due diligence to keep our eyes open. Our police department has already geared up for the schools with the resource officers and will be, you know, out doing their normal patrols along the heavy times when kids are in and out of school, so just a reminder that school is starting tomorrow. Okay? Lions Club, this has been a project, I guess, that's been out there for some period of time, there was basically, I want to spread this word, people were donating money to the Lions Club so that they would have names or symbols or something on bricks and then the bricks are being installed along with other normal bricks to just create this area around part of the playground. I think we're probably close to hopefully half done, you know, what we've been doing over the last several days. Our job is being done in-house by our T P W guys, the job is really coming along nicely. So if you get a chance when it's all said and done, please go over and check it out. They also have put in some additional drainage right off the parking lot area because it's been cooling over there, I guess, for some, some period of time. And so we installed some drains to bring the water away and back into the woods into a drainage area. And we also then recently installed a separate of all of the pebbles and walkway area from the parking lot to the playground that's been upgraded to a concrete ADA compliant sidewalk for, to wheelchairs and such, so I'd like to thank Chris and all his guys for really doing a great job over there, the nine eleven committee that's been down there and threw a lot of kudos to your way for really just doing a really nice job. And we'll be trying to finish that up hopefully without rain and trimming everything down and getting everything ready for Monday. Questions, anything specific? Then we'll just do a water and sewer billing update we've been doing from time to time. Susan has some information she'd like to share with you.
So for the last billing quarter that went out, we have bringing in a total revenue to date, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four eighty-three, to be split between the three different things that we built for, you get billed for your water, you get billed for the sewer and the facility use charge. To date, full year to date, there are six hundred and ninety-five accounts, approximately one-third of the accounts in the village are not paid. And the more disappointing is the facility use charge, we have a four hundred and forty thousand dollar bond payment due in October. This quarter so far, we've only brought in seventy-five, eight seventy-one fifty-three, which is going to make it far short of what's needed to pay that bond.
Yeah, so we've also talked about this at several, several meetings. The, the facilities charge, as Susan just alluded to, is that the calculation when they redid the billing does not meet what the payment is for, that needs to be on an annual basis of, you know, between four hundred and thirty and it fluctuates a little bit because it's a thirty-year loan. So right now, if we're at four hundred and forty thousand dollars, we're probably over two hundred and seventy-five thousand, we're going to be short. So really what that means is that the, is that we need to adjust the facilities charge. So right now, what we're looking at is increasing the facilities charge so it covers that payment that's required. Two fifty-eight dollars is the number that we're looking at currently. So it'll go from thirty-seven to, uh, thirty-seven, fifty-seven to fifty-eight dollars is the number we're calculating right now. Yes?
Thirty-sixty of buildings or houses are not paying the bills?
There are probably between two and three hundred a year that just wait for it to get re-lebbed on their taxes. So it's not like we're not going to get the money, you can pay me now or you can pay me later, you're going to pay. If it's not, if it's not paid by, I think, the end of October, it goes and gets re-lebbed in January on their county and town taxes and we get reimbursed that way.
Remember that increase is over three month period, not every month.
Right. Correct. Because that, again, that fund, the facilities charge is dedicated to pay debt. You know, previous administration, I think, would have been better if they raised the rates and did what they needed to do back in twenty sixteen because at that point, you, when the plant was being constructed and you knew the amount of money that was going to be used, you could have been paying off interest over those five or six years before you finally got to the point of the project being completed and now the bonds have been laid out and now you're basically paying a little bit more at the end of the day. But, yes.
Just, just for clarification, the bond payment that's due in September is four hundred and forty thousand?
Correct.
Is that an annual payment, a quarterly payment?
Annual.
Annual payment, four forty. And you, and you raise how much a year? Currently?
Currently, I believe.
We had about seventy-three last quarter.
About two hundred and eighty-five thousand based on that other, on the thirty-seven, fifty-seven.
Okay, that's, you don't do that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, but raising it just the twenty bucks a month, twenty bucks a quarter? Twenty bucks a quarter or will offset a shortage, you're saying?
Right. Yeah, the rate you're doing right now, based upon a number of units of nineteen hundred, what they had figured, it's two eighty-five, five thirty-two. So we're well sure of that and all that really means is we would be taking money from another fund in order to pay that. And then unfortunately, that money that we borrowed from another fund needs to be repaid back to that fund. So it's, it's just, it's a matter of the numbers and it's, it is what it is. Any other questions? Thanks, Susan. Next is the lead pipe survey that's been, that we discussed a meeting or two ago regarding the Department of Health mandate to locate any lead pipe throughout the village and for every resident. We're concentrating our survey currently on Seacord and Emerson and Douglas Court because we want to be able to pave Seacord Lane and Emerson Drive, but we cannot pave until we have all the statistics and pictures and documentation from every house to show that there has, there is no lead potentially in that home. Susan, what was that number?
So there are a total of fifty-seven houses according to the county tax rolls on Emerson and on Seacord. So far as of last Wednesday, they had fourteen, uh, fourteen responses. So if you live on Emerson or Seacord, and you have now done this, please do so. If you have done it, bother your neighbor.
Yeah, it's really important because I, we don't want to lose this window opportunity of not being able to pave, you know, and then potentially looking at doing it in the spring if we really planned on doing it in the fall.
Yeah, John Allison, Florida Mission Drive, can you put a deadline on this because there's always going to be something.
Yeah, I can put a deadline on it, but what we were going to do probably is send out another letter to the homes that have not responded and just basically say if we don't get this, I mean, I don't know, you know, not to sound threatening, but if we don't, and I know you want your roof paved, we can't pave it and the roof goes undone.
There's nothing else you can do because some of these houses, people don't even own the home.
Well, if it's, if it's a rental, we're sending it to the owners as well besides that if it's a, if it is a rental situation, the letter is going to the owner of the property. So the guy that lives in Perrymus, New Jersey, he's getting the letter saying this is what we need to do. You would hope he would reach out to his tenant and say, call, let them in or follow the instructions, it's super simple, you know, take the pipe, take a look at it, if it's not corroded and it's, you can tell it's copper, just take pictures and we have the email address, send everything out to them and if there's any questions, you know, we respond back.
So if just one person doesn't respond?
We can't.
And there's no other recourse?
By law, we can't do anything. Well, I can't go into his house without permission, so it makes it rather difficult, yes. It is frustrating.
Can't they tell from where the, the pipe goes, from where Washingtonville is responsible? Can't they tell that?
It's all underground, we don't, I mean, we can make fair assumptions, but we're not supposed to be making fair assumptions, we're supposed to get the documentation of every pipe coming into every house and, and putting it in our little database so that we know at the end of the day what we have.
The documentation is for twenty twenty-four, right? It's for the, for state or whatever?
This survey needs to be done by October of twenty-four, correct?
Right, but if, you know, most people on those streets respond that they're not led, can't you just go ahead with the paving?
But if I have to dig up the street, that's a waste of money, right?
But, I mean, don't you assume we were built at the same time with the houses?
Exactly, and that's where, you know, we all feel that every house that's there so far has been copper. Do we feel that everything else in that road is going to be copper? Yes. But we need to do our due diligence to make sure that it is what it is, especially some of the older developments. So you have North Street, South Street, Goshen Avenue, some of the older homes are downtown businesses, some of these buildings were built way back when. So we just need to confirm, we think you're going to be okay. Patricia Lane, Beverly Lane, a little bit older, but we think we're okay there. High Grove, we've already, we know that's all copper. What we have, you know, condominium wise and everything else, we know is copper. So we're, we're just trying to concentrate a little bit on the older section, but again, to get to pave, it's, it's frustrating, trust me. We, we call people all the time when they have a particular water meter issue, just call us, tell us when we can come. Not, not, and, you know, when they get the next bill, it's another, it's another conversation. But we said, just call us, tell us when we can come in, we'll come in and take care of it, but they don't, they don't call.
What happens in October of twenty twenty-four if you haven't gotten the information?
They haven't sent anything yet, yes, being the operative word, and regards to what you were saying, that survey, the state sends very specific guidelines on how we're supposed to keep track of this. It can't just be presumed, they want pictures, they want to know that it was personally inspected and they think we keep a whole Excel sheet of how it was determined that it was not led.
Right, I can understand that, but as far as paving our streets, our two streets.
So that paving is going to run well over eighty thousand dollars to do those two streets. I think it's up to around a hundred and twenty.
About about a hundred and seventy-ish, last time we, we calculated it out.
So if they find that we missed a house with lead, that all has to get chewed up to replace the lead because you know at some point that's what they're going to say. That's on our expense, so that leaves every taxpayer is going to bury that burden of having a street tore up.
Wouldn't that be the homeowners' expense at that point?
The street?
We don't know where it's.
The pipe being replaced?
The pipe, but the tearing up of the street.
If the pipe is led from the house and it's presumable at that point that it would be to the, to the main, that's, and that still needs to be worked out, you know, as far as who the owner takes care of part of it or is it, is a dollar going to be coming on off, off the village? Do we need to replace the entire line? So that, that whole piece still needs to be worked out. What we're trying to do is just get the survey done by next year and then hear from the state on grant opportunities and money probably based upon how many homes you find with lead. It's frustrating, I know.
If you've not responded, why can't they let you find against them?
Well, that's, that's a good point, and that's actually one of the things, hey, Don? Sorry, we're working with the line and it's one of the things we're actually talking about with our water billing and if there's an issue that we need to get into. We have a set of townhouses right now that we're, we have a number of different meter issues and we're aware of it, but they're not letting us in or they make an appointment and they don't show up. So what we're trying to do for the local law is to be able to create some kind of penalty so that if through X number of letters and doing the right procedure, then we can levy a fine of some monetary amount and hopefully it'll be large enough that they'll then realize it that we need to get into, into the building and we need to do our job.
I mean, you can, I mean, there's tons of examples such as false alarms, when people, you know, experience false alarms on a consistent basis, create a local law, enforce it through the penalties of the, your local justice court system. I mean, I don't, I don't know whether or not you want to put it into your bill or put it into your, into your code with penalty, but either way, it works.
Okay. And so, yeah, that's one of the things we are talking to our attorney about.
And we have residents that do the same thing. I had somebody who called up, I put in a work order to change the meter because it hadn't changed for three years and the resident goes, well, I don't want to let anybody in here, now we're going to get a higher water bill.
Yeah. So we are obviously trying to address it, we wish we wouldn't have to go to the extent of putting, levying a fine because we just can't get the opportunity to get in there and fix it. And we're changing a lot of different meters every single week now. So we are, you know, probably getting close to eighty meters that we've already changed within.
I'm thinking we're higher than that. Five layers from the low.
You want me to respond?
Unfortunately, New York State. And I'm sure counsel can back me up, it's very hard for municipalities to deny somebody basic services when there are other causes to remediate such as we levy on taxes.
So we're taking that all in and again, we're working, we'll just send out another letter and try to get people to let us in and do our job. Or very simple, go into your basement, take a picture, send it.
If you send two letters and you've got fourteen out of thirty-seven? Could you send two letters and you got fourteen out of thirty-seven?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven is not happening.
I may go knocking on doors, Don, I may go knocking.
Cool, anything else on that subject? Uh, next is just an update on our financial deficit bond borrowing. Um, the last meeting, we gave an update on the, uh, the borrowing of potentially three million dollars. Um, right now, we do have a lender, um, working with our bond people and our attorneys. We have a due diligence call next Tuesday on the twelfth with the company and the lenders and a bunch of attorneys just to walk and discuss, you know, the lending process. Um, if all that, if that goes well, which we anticipate it will, the following week will understand our percentage of what we'll end up paying for that potential three million dollars. Um, and what we need to pay back as residents for the next ten years. So again, currently, the market, according to our bond folks, had, hadn't really moved that much through the summer, but when it was being initially discussed, it was in the neighborhood of seven percent. So that number roughly was somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred and fifty dollars per family, per unit, that would be added to your tax bill. And that would be something again for the next ten years. Again, this is all due to the overspending, um, lack of funds, budget issues major. And I can't call it a budget, it was just, um, and we have orders, we're working on this stuff right now. So the state is here as we discussed at the last meeting. Um, and we have other accounting firms just trying to get caught up on the years of twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty-four, because that'll be ending shortly. Um, so all of those particular financial statements and so forth are, you know, in the, in the, in the pipeline to be done. So there'll be more to come at our next meeting, or definitely within the first meeting in October at this point. And we'll let you know what the percentage rate is going to be. Our, our plan is that we will send out a letter explaining, you know, pretty much the cause and effect to every resident once we have the percentage rate. Because I want to be, you know, fairly accurate or accurate to the, to the exact number that every resident will be responsible for. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board?
Now, B S T was here last week in-house, it's one of our, what it is, going through documents.
Uh, next is G is E F C, so this is for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we had some previous conversations about this, but when the plant was built, and the, I'll say the paperwork needed to be balanced between E F C, who's pretty much doing the lending, the village component, and the engineers, which were H two M. There's a, there's a imbalance of what was paid to what's paid, what wasn't paid. There were multiple forms that were not completed. And we're currently working on getting that paperwork in, in place. We just actually completed a form today. And what we're, what we're looking at for this one particular quarter is that the village will be reimbursed at, um, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So there were six vendors that were involved, contractors. And again, they were quarterly reports that were, um, needed to be filled out because this stuff wasn't filled out and completed and sent to the appropriate party. We're sitting on one point, you know, one million forty thousand dollars of unused money that E F C is holding on to because the, the books didn't balance, paperwork was not completed. So this is the first step of taking care of one vendor and, and one quarterly report that will give us a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So we're going to be still chasing for the other paperwork that was not completed and it is super, super tedious. We hope to get the remaining balance of that one point, that one million forty thousand dollars. And when we get that money, there are a number of things that we need to, first of all, it needs to be used for a sewer plant. We can't use it for water, we can't use it for general funds. It has to be dedicated to the sewer fund. Now, sewer plant, as we've discussed previously too, was not completed completely. There are electrical issues down there, there were, generator doesn't come on properly. Um, a slew of different things, pumps that were not upgraded. Uh, a wiring system, I'll call it, was not installed or was in the proposal then removed. And this is a device that talks to one computer that talks to everything that's down there. And it wasn't bought. And there was no way that us to, um, when we got into office, we asked to see if we could get that piece of equipment and it's several, it's very expensive, um, that we were trying to get that installed into the plant. Um, the E F C people said, no, we can't do it because your, your books are closed as of twenty twenty. You have a loan, you're done. So what we need to be doing and taking a look at this million dollars is reusing this money to make the repairs and things that were not done properly or whatever components aren't functioning properly when something else happens. Wearing systems, dial, dialing systems, the whole thing needs to be looked at. We've got a building down there where there, an office is, that the roof is leaking. It's, it's, this was supposed to be repaired when the updates were done and for the plant, when it was going to be upgraded. This building was supposed to get a new roof, walls repaired. It's, it's a, it's a disaster, the interior walls and ceiling are, are water stained. I mean, I wouldn't put my dog in there, it is terrible. So that money, we're going to allocate it, we're sitting with our sewer department managers, our D P W managers, uh, police department, we're starting our budget process. Part of that is going to be asked of them, is to forecast out three years, what do we need in a priority sequence? So there's a lot of maintenance things that are down there that need to be done. So just wanted to, you know, keep everybody abreast of what, what, what's going on down there and what's going on with the, uh, the financials and the money. Um, because obviously it's super important, and again, we're talking about a million dollars. That's to me insanity, that paperwork just stopped as of twenty twenty, nothing was filled out, nothing was done. So, any questions? Thank you. Let's see, um, an update on Sewell Park. We found out, um, and actually this goes back to when they wanted to be Sewell Park back in the probably twenty fifteen, sixteen area. The issue with the, where the three houses were knocked down and we wanted to propose a park. Um, I did some research and found that FEMA is involved in this process. They need to approve us to be able to build a park. So we are working with the Homeland Security FEMA Division in New York State and waiting to get some answers from them. We presented to them their ide, our ideas of a park. Um, I'm waiting for a drawing of a park to be completed hopefully in a couple of weeks. We'll send that up to them. And then in the meantime, we're just kind of sitting tight, waiting for all that to unwind. And then we can figure out based upon what we want in that park that we'll be able to go out and start budgeting and going for grant money to create that park that is so well deserved and, and again, should have been done years and years ago. But the first step was never done, they never contacted FEMA to start the ball rolling. So it's, um, we're really at square one at the moment. The other part of that, we've also been in touch with the family members because they've been emailing and calling, just asking where the park is and the, and the sorority as well. So I've been emailing and talking to them on a frequent basis, so they're in the loop with the project. Any questions on Sewell Park? Uh, Community Day Downtown Businesses on September ninth. Justin, would you guys like to give an update on it? Or Justine?
So, um.
I mean, Patrick.
The local businesses are doing Community Day, some of Blackwell Square is going to be shut down. The Big Ledger Cheesecake is going to be outside, F J Pizza, Louis the Trophy Shop. Um, across the street, the Modest Kitchen, there are going to be vendors in the lot there. We're going to have a DJ, we're going to have like a bounce house for the kids, Johnny Fly. There's going to be homemade Italian gelato, so it should be fun. And it's also the Community Y Y R sale, it's the ninth and tenth, so hopefully it'll bring people into the village at some time.
Cool, right, and you also have a movie, correct?
So there's going to be a movie, so after Community Day ends at seven, we're going to show Mary Poppins. So that's going to be from seven to nine. So we'll have Top Four, Cotton Candy, Come On Down. Is there a rain day? There's no rain day right now.
No rain, no rain.
Just a rainy day. Is it too late for anybody who might want to be part of the participation?
No, it's still, it's still something that is.
No, in the, in the Community Y Y R sale.
No, they can still, I mean, the map is together, but we still have time to add more people. Valerie on the event committee.
Okay, yeah, so that brings up the next, actually, the, just so everybody's aware, that parking lot in E J McLaughlin area, um, that will be closing at approximately twelve, so they can have time to set up. Correct, Patrick, I'm under it, okay, cool. And then the community garage sale, that's also on the ninth and tenth. So anybody wants to participate, who should they contact?
They can contact the event committee.
Okay.
Through the, the email.
You want to throw an email out there?
So it's washingtonvillenewyorkinbank@gmail.com.
Great. Next, our police department, um, has created a tips email address. Um, Chief, would you like to give a update on that?
Sure, just created an email address, a generic one, crimetips@rashinaville-my.gov. We post it on social media, we post it on the village website. It's really just used if, uh, anybody has some criminal activity that they want to report, like past, not currently. If someone sees someone breaking into a house, please call nine one, please call our seven-digit line. This email goes to certain officers, it doesn't go to the direct, it doesn't go to everybody and it's not for emergency calls. Um, you've still got to call nine one or the seven-digit lines. More or less, if we push something out, uh, you know, kids breaking into cars and we want information, we're going to throw that email address there, so if anybody has a rain camera, information or anything, they can, they can send it to that email address. We do investigations, we usually give out our business cards. This is just an easy email address that we can remember and we can give it out for anybody to report information to us. Wanted people, if we put out a picture of somebody we're looking for, you can email that address. You can remain anonymous if you want. We always like for you to call us, so if we have additional questions, we can ask you those questions. If you do email us and want to remain anonymous, that's fine. But we do like to have some information, so if we have follow-up questions, we can call you back.
That's great, thanks, dude. While you're standing, before you sit, um, the next item is, uh, our police department is going to run a program for infant children's safety seat program on, uh, September twenty-third from nine to one, so.
Sure, so we've been trying to do this for a couple of years. We have certified car seat technicians, we have two of them. Uh, one works in the days now and one works in the evening. But in order to go to this training, they got to renew it every year, they have to go to certain, uh, training, they have to do certain car seat installations, it's very popular. Um, so the county asked for us to host it, they thought, we haven't done this in many years. I don't think we've ever done it here, uh, but our officers go to like the Galleria and do it, or they'll go to Newburgh and do it, because you have to do so many car seat installations to keep certified. So the county asked, uh, a few agencies to host it, they chose us. So we got the date, it's September twenty-third, it's from nine to one. You can come down, there's going to be a lot of different police officers here. Whoever wants to come that day is invited, uh, police-wise. Uh, so you might see, uh, you know, local Blooming Grove, Chester, New Windsor, it might be even, you know, a department from another county coming. And what they do is you can bring your car in, they can make sure the car seats are properly installed. If you have questions, you can ask them, uh, they can install a car seat for you, they can give you some literature. It's a really good PR, uh, day, um, so, believe it or not, it's, it's pretty tricky these days to, to install a car seat properly. Um, but we do, we do have the two technicians, so when they call our police department, we just give them their information. Uh, the detective will call back sort of a date and time that they come, come to the police station and then the officer works with them, uh, installing it and making sure it's properly installed. So again, it's the twenty-third from nine to one here.
Great, thanks, James, appreciate that. Uh, next item is the generated sewer plant that we've also been discussing over the last several months. So the great news is the generator is gone. Um, we moved that thing out, I think, last week. Um, from a technical standpoint, it was the previous Monday that we actually had cranes and the electricians were here, everything was pre, prior to, uh, the move. And then the crane came in, basically everything was unbolted, they lifted it, they brought it over to the new pad, put it in, and then over the next couple of days, the wiring was completed, the system was up and running. They ran several tests, Chris, right, they ran with one day, full, full, full speed, whatever you want to call it. So that's, that's really good news because again, that thing was costing us fifty-nine hundred dollars a month. They were paying that since twenty eighteen. So, you know, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars that was really spent for no reason at all because we're using a generator that they said could not be used. Don't know, doesn't make any sense, but at the end of the day, it's gone. And, uh, again, four hundred thousand dollars is a great sum of money that could have been used for a lot of different things at that sewer plant. And, um, the good news again, it's gone, so. Any questions on that? Um, just an update on the Pickleball Court quotes. Um, we have received the fencing, which we approved last week for our last meeting. Um, we're still waiting for a contact, it's, either you guys are really busy or, uh, they don't feel like working, but there's companies out there doing line painting and the color of the court itself having a color. Um, and the other, so that's one quote that we have to go after. And the other one is a quote for the, um, the, what do you call it, the fence rack and tennis court, whatever it is, post, well, the post and the, and the fence end. Yeah, so as soon as we get the three vendors on that, we'll get that approved and, and things will be moving in a, in a good direction. Everybody's lined up, the fence guy's ready to go, the paving guy's ready to go, so. Um, that all can, from as far as the line, we can hopefully, you know, get that done in a very quick timeframe.
Does everybody know what Pickleball is now after the last meeting?
Everybody, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Police spoke about it.
Yeah, so let's see, what else we have? Um, and again, just to mention, again, with the Pickleball Court is kind of sideways into the high growth dedication, growth dedication status. Um, we've been working with the engineers, surveyors, the Reaver Home, um, people and they've been basically putting everything together in a nice little package so that it could be signed off, everything could be delivered to Orange County, then everything is basically entered in. Um, and we're at that point that the village will receive, I believe it's eighty-five or eighty-seven thousand dollar check for the, um, homes that were not paid for, for recreation fees. And so again, that, most of that money, or part of that money anyway, at this point, will be going to the Pickleball Courts and we'll be doing some additional, um, uh, wood chips, whatever they call it, and other special wood chips for playgrounds. But we'll be, uh, you know, taking care of Fern Allen Park and as well. But we'll be, uh, you know, taking care of Fern Island Park and as well as Memorial Park Playground. Um, that park is also going to get an additional, two pieces of equipment through the Lions Club, who's raised the money. Um, I don't know if you guys remember a couple of years back, there were aluminum can drives for recycling, and they must have made a lot of money on, uh, cans. So at the end of the day, uh, there's two new pieces of equipment that will be coming and it's in the process of being built now, and we're expecting delivery, Chris, was it November, December? So depending on whether we can get them in the ground, if not, then it'll be, you know, something that will happen first, uh, first of spring. So that'll be a good thing to happen. Um, as far as, again, the road dedication, I think we'll have everything in place for our next meeting, um, our second meeting in this month. And then the roads can be dedicated and the village will be responsible for the snow plowing and maintenance, et cetera, all those roads and, um, the one green area, that's by the retention pumps, and that'll be, that'll be done. Um, we did notify a bunch of the homeowners that live there, because the school system has already set up its bus schedule, so they're not planning on driving into the development. Um, they're going to be picking up the children in the same location as it was last year. So most of the residents are aware of that now. And if they had any questions, we've kind of directed them over to the school. Any questions on any of that?
No, but I do want to say, we get residents up from there calling now who want to put post boxes on the street. Or on their houses, rather than the gang boxes. So if anybody in Highgrove is asking that question, the approval of the development called for gang boxes, so you cannot have the box on your curb or on your house, it has to be the gang boxes.
Yeah, if anybody does, and that's, that was an agreement, I guess, with the post office to Reeder, uh, Homes, because, uh, any development that's being built, I guess that size, is now going to be using the gang boxes. They're not going to be putting mailboxes in front of every house for new developments moving forward. It seems like pretty much in New York State, and it could be, could be nationwide, but that's the information I got from the postmaster here in Washingtonville. So. Good to know. Okay, so we'll move into resolutions if there's no other questions. So, first one is to request a traffic study from the intersections of Route ninety-four and two oh eight on Route ninety-four and North Street during the peak hour, peak travel hours from six thirty AM to nine AM. Then from three PM to seven PM. Motion, second, woman in favor?
What are you looking to get on the resolution? What, they can see that they add more lanes or?
Well, we want the traffic study done to see if potentially, is there any sequencing of the light? I mean, especially in the morning, if you're here, obviously you know the log cameras you get, because everybody's going to the middle school and the high school really at the same time. So if there's any light sequencing or a better way to manage left-hand turns, right-hand turns, um, any, any suggestions that they can come up with? And, and the resolutions we're doing, like this one, and the next one, where it's from the conversation with the Assemblyman Mar, that he needs this information, he needs the resolutions to say that the board is in agreement with this, and that we're giving him the resolutions, and then he brings them up to New York State and starts the process with the okay. Okay, so next is, um, resolution to approve Department Transportation Study for the directional sign to our village public parking lot on Route two oh eight and Route ninety-four. Steve, Donald, second. Any questions, comments? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you very much. Next is a resolution to approve the request for the Department of Transportation to plan and install a sidewalk from our village parking lot on Route ninety-four, heading west to the existing sidewalk. This sidewalk is necessary for the safety concerns as we're developing a park for the residents across from the middle school. Have a motion, please. Vernon, second on Steve. Any questions, comments? Woman in favor? Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution to approve the Department of Transportation for the installation of pedestrian crossing warning lights at the following locations, Avond Boulevard intersection, North Street, North Street intersection at Route ninety-four, Route ninety-four intersection, North Street, Route ninety-four across from Washingtonville Pharmacy. And lastly, it's Brothered Drive intersection, Cartwheel Court. Have a motion, please. Steve, on the motion, Donald, on the second. Comments, questions?
What, what is a warning light, what is that?
So, they're, they're out there, they are basically almost like a, uh, it's a strobe light.
Is it a yellow light that blinks?
Yes.
Okay.
It comes on a bar.
Yeah.
And it's really, it's amber and it's super bright. And we, we, the, I mean, our situation, when people try and cross the street, especially by North Street, um, and of course these other locations, like, we just think that when you do see it, people do stop.
And who determined these areas?
We did with the police department.
Okay, can I have another, can I make another suggestion?
Sure.
Um, I live in Brookside, Aiden, in the trailer park. It's right across from the village wall, and the fire department is on the side. And we can never get out of there.
So it's not for vehicle traffic, it's for pedestrian traffic?
People can't get out of there.
Okay, I got you.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Um, uh, it's very difficult and it's dangerous, because it's not a cause, it's not a painted crosswalk or anything like that, but it has to be used for the trailer park, for people to go into the trailer.
Yeah, and that street is Nicole?
That's the next street, Nicole Street.
Nicole. So if I could, we can amend the resolution to include the intersection of Route ninety-four and Nicole Street. And are these, are these not guarantees?
Oh, no, I realize that.
Because when you're dealing with state highway, everything that comes into play with what they need to do or what they do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, the area by the school, they, they, I heard they didn't like the high school crosswalk, they didn't like the middle school, or they feel that there was too many crosswalks. So they wanted to only really, at the end of the day, have one crosswalk, I'm like, that's really kind of weird. But the, what would help us is if we did get this crosswalk at the village parking lot. Right, it would be safer, because we do have the sidewalks there. And then you walk, walk across the street and you're potentially at the, um, you know, the bagel store or the pharmacy. The kids can then just walk down the street on that side of the street, and it would be a better situation. So, you know, that, that would be part of our recommendation.
And this is the light that's on all day while you go all night?
No, it only goes on when you push the button. So it's off, but I'm, I'm, it is the, it's strobe lights or LEDs, it is very, very bright. And I've seen cars in the middle of an intersection and somebody, you don't even see the person, just between car park and everything. They push the button and the cars that were coming stopped. And the person across the street, he'd feel safe without, you know, ducking and hiding and trying to get across the street. Yeah, it's really, really, really impressive things. So the areas at least that we, we're starting with, and they're, they're about fifteen thousand apiece. Because they're, first of all, they're, they're solar and they are Wi-Fi linked together. So when you push the button on the one, it's linked to the one across the street.
I was just thinking of a yellow light.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a higher tech.
That's expensive.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, not a little yellow bulb anymore, but they're really effective. Okay, any other discussion? Anything on the board? Okay, thank you. And, okay. Okay, um, woman in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five oh, thank you. Next is a resolution to approve the Hudson Valley Books Under Twelve Baseball Team fundraiser five K from Elveronport to Woodfield and back. Um, so it's basically a, a five K on December ninth, Saturday at ten AM, pending, uh, the chief's approval, and any changes? Yes?
We don't have insurance though, either, I don't see any insurance.
Yeah, no, we have insurance.
So that's pending insurance.
Thank you. Yeah, I sent an email to Paul from the, from the village and I'm supposed to supply, thank you. Okay. Any, any other questions? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. Any questions? Go ahead, give the motion. Let me, we stopped it, all right. Okay. So then we'll back up a little bit, my mistake, so. You have the motion on Steve, the second, Donald. Thanks, Donald. Any other conversation? Okay. Woman in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, thank you. Next is resolution to approve Joe the Plumber Plus Inc. For the installation of a new pump for the Fireman's Memorial Park well, at a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Have a motion, please? Vernon, second? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Yes?
Is that for potable water, or was that water going to be used for portable? Has the contaminants that were in there from all the salt or whatever was in there, wouldn't they come use it?
There's a, a filter system in there, and it passed Department of Health regulations.
All right.
Yeah.
I know they're not using it for quite a while.
And we got ready to actually get the thing up and running with all the components, and then they, they found out because the pump really hadn't been used and it basically shot, so, yeah.
And we did get three bids on that. I, I was pretty strict in making sure all the bids had the same components.
Right.
Same parts, so we were comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first, the winning bid was the twenty-one seven. Tam Enterprises came in at twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, and Reliable Well Pump Services came in at twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. And it was, as, um, Susan described, all the specs were all written by the, by our engineer, so everybody followed the same guidelines. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Next is a resolution to have the mayor sign a grant for a hundred thousand multimodal agreement, grant eight, MA four one three dot three zero A, universal multimodal capital project agreement for paving of Emerson Drive and C Court Lane. Have a motion, please, first? Donald? Steve, on the second, questions, comments? Woman in favor?
Aye.
And motion passes. So really what that means for Emerson Drive and C Court is that, and potentially for the whole residents, we're going to use that hundred K to do the paving, which is going to save us a hundred thousand dollars of our chip money, right, that's a grant money or the money that comes from the state we've, we've talked about. I stopped talking about that one. Um, so that'll give us another hundred thousand dollars to use elsewhere. So we'll be somewhere in the head of the game. So that's good.
But you got the grant, or you're applying, you're applying for the grant?
No, we needed to do this, uh, resolution, and then I, by doing the resolution, I'm able to sign it, and then I send it up to my contact in, um, the Department of Transportation, and then they'll give us the, supposedly process it for a hundred thousand dollars.
So it's guaranteed, it's not?
Yeah, that, that's what they're saying. Yeah? Cool. Next is a resolution to approve Black Lagoon to winter rent and service the two village fountains. This fall for a price not to exceed, that one's thirteen hundred dollars. Have a motion, please? Yeah? I'm with the motion. Yeah, that's actually doing the O-rings and doing the inside maintenance of it, yes.
How long for the setting to be done, year to year, every year, like in the fall?
We can check, but I don't think, I don't, when I asked her, it hadn't been done in several years, so I thought it'd be a good idea. They didn't have an exact date, but you say a couple of years, I'd rather. For the five hundred dollars, I think it was more than it's worth, worth it. Um, who made the motion?
Nobody.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second was Vernon. Any other questions, comments? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you. Next is a resolution to approve Spinacre Cyber Insurance Report in the amount of three thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars, as submitted to the village by insurance agents Marshall and Sterling. Have a motion, please? Vernon on the motion, second?
Second.
Susan on the second. Questions, comments? So, uh, for the audience, this is, um, doing amendment, um, to our insurance policy to give us at least a million dollar coverage for a cyber attack. Previously, there was nothing. So if we got hit with a cyber attack, um, to be honest with you, I'm not even sure how we pay for it. So for three thousand dollars, we're getting a million dollars insurance, God forbid there was a cyber attack. Thank you, sir. Next is a resolution to approve the resignation and retirement of Police Sergeant Francis Saragliano, effective on August thirty-first, I'm sorry, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Motion, please? Steve, second?
Second.
Donald? Any questions, comments? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion passes five zero, thank you. Okay, next is a resolution to approve Joseph J. De Santello. Uh, he recently completed his probation period on August twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three, and there is a change in salary effective three one to seventy-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars per contract. Have a motion, please? Steve on the motion, second? Second, Vernon? Questions, comments? Woman in favor? Motion passes five zero, thank you. Next would be a resolution to authorize a budget transfers amendment as necessary to affect any necessary transfers of funds to pay the warrants. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Vernon? Comments, questions? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you. Okay, that concludes our agenda, we're on to additional public comment, if anyone has any questions. Yeah, of course. Yeah, Dave?
Uh, come on, David, it's five Lincoln Drive. It's an abandoned house. And the yard is starting to really grow up, so.
Grass?
Yeah.
All right.
The doors could do something about it.
Incident report?
Yeah, I'll take care of it, then. I'll do the incident report and, um.
I mean, Mr. Rubiuski?
Yeah, we've actually been at that property, we've had Jay, of course, um, Jay and Doc. They, they, we've been in contact with them regarding the grass site as well. So we've been out there several times to rectify the problem, get them out there to do it. Okay, I'll take care of that, wait. You said it was five Lincoln?
Five Lincoln.
Okay, anyone else?
Just, just quickly back to the lead pipe on Emerson Drive. Is there something in the works that, to look at other alternatives to getting compliance? Or are they going to send another letter?
Can I jump into that?
Absolutely.
You know, you're, you're talking about it in two separate ways, one is with just a hammer to force compliance. The other way is to, to use a carrot, you could basically potentially certify the properties. the other way is to, to use a carrot, you could basically potentially certify the properties that respond and say they don't have lead in their lines, that they actually have lead-free property. And so you give a certification to people, and someone buying that house might be interested in knowing that the water line in and out of that house is, is clean. Whereas instead of punishing the people, you just say, hey, look, here's your perk, use the carrot. I mean, that's another option.
You could have ten-dollar Amazon cards.
Talking donuts, man. Would you mind if Brian, if you can mention that to Brian tomorrow?
Sure.
And we'll see how we can get that to work, that'd be great.
It's just the other, the opposite end of the same.
Right, that's good, good, bro, thanks, Don. Anyone else? Okay, if not, have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to which?
Okay, um, Steve? Questions, comments? Any, anybody from the board have anything they'd like to ask? All heading.
I wouldn't knock on my neighbor's doors.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you very much, yes.